Board members, please join us. Thank you very much. The this September 10, 2015, regular meeting number three of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence, and performance of the National Anthem by FCPS Elementary General Music Teachers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands the union, the God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Oh, wow. Yeah. Oh, my goodness. Thank you so much. Those are some music to -- that's just a little slice of the incredible talent that we have in this school system and that after spending the week, the last couple, three weeks getting ready for the beginning of school, that they took time to join us tonight and sing that beautiful rendition is just such a gift to us. So, thank you. A few announcements before we begin tonight's meeting. At this time, I would like to introduce Eileen Muehlberg, who will be the new Clerk of the School Board effective October 1, 2015. Eileen, if you would stand. Ms. Scottard, sitting to her left, will be with us for a few more weeks, and we will miss her terribly, but we're very much looking forward to working with Eileen. And also, I would like to introduce the new Food and Nutrition Services Director Rodney Taylor, if you would stand, Mr. Taylor. We are very fortunate to have Mr. Taylor here from a whole other part of the country to come and lead our Food and Nutrition Services program, and we are really looking forward to working with you. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I understand. How many schools have you visited already this week? Twenty-one schools already. Isn't that impressive? So, that's very -- really happy to have you here.
If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is on the table by the auditorium entrance. You may access tonight's agenda and related meeting documents by going to the FCPS website, select School Board, and then Upcoming Meetings and Agendas. This meeting is also being streamed live on the FCPS website homepage. Click on Watch School Board Live. Please turn off or silence your cellphones. I will now call on Mr. Press for announcements.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to begin by recognizing National Hispanic Heritage Month, which goes from September 15 to October 15 of 2015. America's cultural diversity has always been a great strength of our nation. The Hispanic-American community has a long and important history of commitment to our nation's core values, and the contributions of this community have helped make our country great. During National Hispanic-American Heritage Month, we celebrate the many achievements of Hispanic-Americans and recognize their contributions to our country. This year's theme is Honoring Our Heritage: Building Our Future. In 1968, Congress authorized President Lyndon Johnson to proclaim National Hispanic Heritage Week, and this observance was expanded in 1988 to a month-long celebration to honor our nation's Hispanic heritage. During this month, America celebrates the traditions, ancestry, and unique experiences of those who traced their roots to Spain, Mexico, the countries of Central and South America, and the Caribbean. Throughout our history, Hispanic-Americans have enriched the American way of life. We recognize the millions of Hispanic-Americans whose love of family, hard work, and community have helped unite us as a people and sustain us as a nation. We also recognize U.S. Constitution Day and Citizenship Day, which will be recognized on September 17 of this year. Constitution Day and Citizenship Day are observed each year on September 17 to commemorate the signing of the Constitution on September 17, 1787, and recognize all who by coming of age or by naturalization have become citizens. Recent legislation has renamed the day as Constitution Day and Citizenship Day and urges proper observance of this day. This year, the official observance day is Thursday, September 17, and is the 227th anniversary of the nation's founding document. In observance of Constitution Day and Citizenship Day, all schools in FCPS will be observing this day with activities that recognize the adoption of the United States Constitution and those who have become citizens under the Constitution. Schools will use a variety of curriculum resources to teach students about the importance of the Constitution and responsible citizenship. This may relate to the School Board's Student Achievement Goal 3: Demonstrate Responsibility to the Community and the World. Through the school year, high school students will have an opportunity to participate in service learning projects related to responsible citizenship, which can lead to a civic seal on their diploma. And lastly, I'd like to recognize Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. September has been designated as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month to increase awareness of the types of cancer that strike children, focus on issues affecting survivors, and raise funds for research and family support. In the United States, pediatric cancer strikes nearly 16,000 children under the age of 21 every year. Of those FCPS students being treated for childhood cancer, many participate in homebound instruction while they're undergoing treatment or recuperating. Research has helped to improve treatments that have decreased mortality rates for many types of childhood cancer by more than 50% in the last 30 years. FCPS physical education teacher Jake Oakley, a 33-year veteran FCPS employee, was so inspired by one of his students with leukemia that he founded Ellie's Hats, a nonprofit organization that provides warm and colorful hats to children undergoing cancer treatment, strives to raise awareness of childhood cancer, and provides support to children and their families. The Board encourages the community to support children and their families who are battling cancer and to remember those whose lives were cut short by pediatric cancer.
Thank you, Mr. Press. Dr. Garza?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, just one more quick introduction of someone very special. We are joined by Dr. Susan Marks. Some of you may have met Dr. Marks. She is serving as our Interim Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources. Susan, if you'd wave. Dr. Marks has served for almost -- has had over 30 years of experience in HR, both in Montgomery County Public Schools. She's also served as Community Superintendent, and she has a lot of experience, and I will tell you, I'm already hearing from our schools how much they appreciate her responsiveness and certainly her experience has been very helpful as well. So, thank you for allowing me to introduce her to you all and to our public. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you very much. You came along at a great time, didn't you, right when everything is just as busy as it can be? So, thank you so much for filling in. I also would like Mr. Oakley to please stand for a minute, if you don't mind. Mr. Oakley is the founder of Ellie's Hats, and Mr. Press just spoke about him. Actually, Mr. Oakley is now teaching at Woodburn Elementary, where I taught for a couple of years, so a great place to be. And Mr. Oakley very kindly gave every board member a brochure about Ellie's Hats, which is a fundraising program, and also golden ribbons, cancer awareness ribbons, for children's cancer awareness. So, thank you so much for all that you do and for being here tonight. Mr. Press?
Once again, thank you, Mr. Oakley. Your service to the children of Fairfax County and the Commonwealth is extremely valued.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to take a moment to recognize some scouts in the audience. I'd like to recognize Max Hollis and Alex Hollis of Troop 1128 in Vienna and Kayden Santos of Troop 4077 in Alexandria. Thank you for being here. If you'd please rise to be recognized.
Okay. Thank you. For those of you who noticed, we have an empty chair. Mrs. Schultz is not able to be with us tonight. I call on Mrs. Strauss next.
Thank you. This evening, we are going to honor a very special employee who has been at Cooper Middle School for a very long time. In Fairfax County, we are always very gifted to have employees who stay with us many, many years touch the lives of children, families, and our faculty. So, this evening, we will be honoring Ms. Miller from Cooper Middle School. So, Ms. Miller and your family and the Cooper Middle School administration, if you would like to come and stand by the lectern while I read these wonderful words honoring Ms. Miller. So, Cooper people, if you would like to come up so we can be speaking to you and Ms. Miller Wonderful. Okay. We have all of our cheering gallery here. Thank you. And this is the resolution that the School Board is offering to honor Ms. Miller's service. Whereas Shirley Miller served Fairfax County Public Schools for over 50 years with excellence and dedication, Ms. Miller was thoroughly committed to maintaining exceptional levels of building cleanliness and was recognized for setting the highest of standards for her staff's performance. And whereas Ms. Miller began her career with Fairfax County Public Schools in 1955 and worked as a maid at the Williston Elementary School, one of the few positions available to her in that era of segregation, she also worked on the custodial staff at Stewart High School and is field custodian and school-based custodian at Falls Church and Marshall High Schools. After serving as the building supervisor at Twain Middle School, Ms. Miller retired from FCPS with 30 years of service. Whereas after only four years of retirement, Ms. Miller returned to Fairfax County Public Schools to work for five years as the building supervisor at Rocky Run Middle School before retiring for a second time. However, Ms. Miller's strong desire to continue to work led her to return to FCPS a third time, first as a roving building supervisor and then as the building supervisor at Cooper Middle School until she passed away in January of 2014. And whereas Ms. Miller was an exceptional professional in her work ethic, loyalty, and dedication, served as an excellent example for all other custodial personnel, Ms. Miller had high expectations for the care and upkeep of Cooper Middle School, and visitors often commented on how well-maintained the school was and the welcoming nature it conveyed. Ms. Miller always supported the needs of the school's students, staff, and parents with an incredible level of energy and enthusiasm. Whereas Ms. Miller was frequently relied on to attend to many types of problems and situations, including clearing the school property of snow and debris after severe storms, resolving plumbing and electrical issues, and planning after-school and community-building usage, whether it was during the school day or at night, Ms. Miller always put in the effort and the work that was required to meet the challenge at hand. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board, in recognition and appreciation of Shirley Miller's dedicated service to Cooper Middle School and her valued contribution to Fairfax County Public Schools, hereby names the cafeteria at James Fenimore Cooper Middle School, the Shirley Miller Cafeteria in her honor and memory. And thank you to the Miller family for giving us this wonderful woman for so many years. She has touched the lives of all of us. Thank you so much. I so move this resolution.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Moon, all those in favor?
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. If you all would like to come forward, and the School Board will come and take a picture with you, and will present the plaque. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll just fill in for that side as well. Right on in. Nice and tight, please. And right. Wonderful. Thank you. I think you can see the background. Okay, look in right here. One, two, three, one. And then let's get smaller, please. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Wonderful to see so many family members and supporters. Thank you for joining us tonight. The next order of business is citizen participation. Tonight, two speakers have signed up to address the Board. Fairfax County citizens who would like to address the School Board should arrange to be placed on the speakers list by signing up online at www.fcpse.edu or by calling the School Board office at (571) 423-1075. The School Board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries, or personal attacks on any person. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. Okay, the next -- speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes. This -- sorry, we already got that. Okay, our first speaker tonight is Steve Greenberg, President, Fairfax County Federation of Teachers.
Dr. Garza, Chairman Hines, legendary Mr. Press, esteemed School Board members, my name is Steve Greenberg. I'm the President of the Fairfax County Federation of Teachers. I represent outstanding educators in FCPS whose focus is on our students, educating, protecting, and caring for them daily. I'll be speaking tonight to Agenda Item 3.03, Appointment of Deputy Clerk, as well as reporting to you from the employee's perspective on how the opening of our schools went this week. FCFT supports that the School Board appoint Beverly Madea as Deputy Executive Assistant and Deputy Clerk to the School Board. Many of us have worked with Ms. Madea in her years as a former, as an employee in former roles. We all know her to be focused, personable, and incredibly responsible. She's going to do an excellent job with this role. Mr. Press, I hope your colleagues are enjoying arriving at school awake, resilient, and ready to learn this year. The transition to later high school start times went very smoothly. I know this because The Washington Post said so. I would suggest that the doomsayers were either not as smart as Mr. Plattenburg or had other agendas, or C, all of the above. As the staff at Children's Medical and every other reputable physician will tell you, by providing our students with the rest they need, FCPS may save tens of millions of dollars over the next few years in remediation costs, social-emotional supports, and interventions for overly tired students, et cetera. But more importantly, our students will know our focus is on their care and education, an investment in the future leaders of this community. What's that worth? Someone get me an audit on how much it will cost me if the next generation cares back or not. How much is that worth, Ms. Evans? Anyone? Speaking of budget and money, I'd like to thank everyone who attended the Community Information Session last night at South Lakes High School and all of those who are now submitting their budget ideas through the online tool. Remember that there's another session this Saturday, September 12, at Mount Vernon High School from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon? I'd like to formally challenge our county supervisors to come up with a budget for us using that budget tool. Please forward those to me so I can let whichever stakeholders that most impacts and upsets know. That seems pretty fair, as the lack of planning and competence in funding of our schools by our county leaders is what has put us in this situation to begin with. Finally, I'd like to recognize Mr. Sills and the entire HR department and all of our wonderful FCPS administrators, principals, APs for doing such a great job over the summer in regards to honoring teacher contract time and supporting our teaching staff with the opening of school items. I had recently asked my membership for input on the strategic plan at Ignite, how that was rolled out to our teachers, and I'm happy to report that there was no stress in regards to it. It's not an accident because Chief of Staff Smith and his staff worked with us in the spring to make sure it would go smoothly. Great job to him and all who supported the effort. School is off to a great start. Thank you for that, Dr. Garza. Your teachers appreciate that things went smoothly so they could focus on what is most important. That's our students. Thank you for your time and your service to our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Greenberg. Next is Phyllis Payne of Sleep.
That is a hard act to follow. I am also here to say thank you. Sleep has been getting thank you emails and seeing positive comments on our Facebook page, and I just wanted to share that positivity with all of you and with Dr. Garza and with Jeff Plattenburg and with the transportation staff and the communications people who worked so hard to make this a smooth start to the school year. And it's just been great. I've been hearing all kinds of wonderful things from people I don't know, people I do know, all over. So, I just was going to share a couple of those. Someone wrote, "This morning was awesome for my two high school students, ninth and 12th grade. They had time to eat breakfast at home, get off to school without rushing. Thanks to all of you for your hard work." One person just wrote, "Thank you for the gift of mourning," again. So, nice to be seeing the mourning. Later start times for high school works for us. Having a later start time for my teen just makes life less stressful for our family. Our whole household is happier and more well-rested. Thank you. So much less stress in the house this morning with later start times. This is an extremely positive change for the health and learning ability of our high school students. This was the best change my children had in their entire K-12 FCPS experience." How about that one? That's a good one. "My student and I love the new schedule. The extra hour provides ample time to get some extra sleep and fit in a nutritious breakfast. Hooray for FCPS and its leadership in implementing safe and healthy start times for teens. It's a wise move as it helps to ensure that students are awake and in class at a time for which their body clocks are set. What a difference this morning. It was a civil exchange at breakfast, not the fight to stay awake as it has been for the last dozen years. An extra hour of sleep is a huge improvement in our quality of life. Thanks." So, I hope you guys are hearing positive things too, because I think you all deserve kudos for the hard work you did with community engagement and the implementation plans and Jeff and your team and working with VDOT and FCDOT and so on. So, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Payne. I call on Mr. Press again.
Thank you, Madam Chair. What else can I say but it's good to be back? This time of year is always so exciting as 188,500 summer stories flood into our classrooms, and our schools are so abuzz with energy, even more so thanks to our new later high school start times. I'd like to take a minute to thank this Board for taking that action nearly a year ago and prioritizing the needs of students. Your investment in our health paid off, as can be seen in the better-rested faces of thousands of high school students across the county. But our work isn't done yet. With middle school starting so early, we still have a ways to go until we get this absolutely right. As I was walking into school on Tuesday, our first day, I took a moment to reflect, and it made me think of just how much there is to be thankful for and proud of. We welcomed back an ever-increasing number of students to our classrooms, thousands upon thousands of teachers, and opened almost 200 schools on time and effectively. And I'd like to pass a heartfelt thank you to all of the staff that made that happen. Your work is incredibly appreciated. Our students continue to amaze me. In schools across the county, at every level, students have mobilized to make new students feel welcome and valued and embracing them into their school's culture. Academically, it was just announced that FCPS beat its own record, putting up over 230 national merit semifinalists, including a whopping 163 from Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology. All this accomplished over three days of school. I'd say that we're off to a pretty good start. Regarding the Board's action tonight, I'm proud to nominate some incredibly qualified individuals to serve as the representatives of their peers on multiple Board Advisory Committees, and would like to thank all of them in advance for their service and time given for the benefit of the community. Looking ahead, I'm excited to hear from students at our upcoming Student Advisory Council kickoff, to continue important work on the Budget Task Force, and to engage and visit with students from around the county as I begin my school visits. We've got a great year ahead, and I can't wait to see what's in store. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Press. Always good to hear from you. All right, we are now at number three on our agenda, the Consent Agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the Board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through Board Review, and documentation has been provided to all Board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any Board member prior to the meeting. Item 3.01, approve the minutes of July 23, 2015, regular School Board meeting and the August 19, 2015, special meeting. Item 3.02, appoint members to the Family Life Education Curriculum Advisory Committee as detailed in the Agenda Item. 3.03, appoint Beverly Madea as Deputy Executive Assistant and Deputy Clerk to the School Board effective September 8, 2015. 3.04, appoint individuals to serve on committees as detailed in the Agenda Item. Is there any objection to approving the Consent Agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the Consent Agenda is approved. Now, we go to Item 4, New Business. The following are new business agenda items. There will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. Item, there's only one, 4.01, appoint individuals to serve a one-year term on the Challenged Materials Interdepartmental Review Committee as detailed in the Agenda Item. Item 5.01, Superintendent Matters, Dr. Garza.
Wow, that was quick. That probably will never happen again that fast if history is a true test. Well, as Mr. Press pointed out earlier, what a great start we had this week, and I could not be more pleased nor more proud of our wonderful FCPS employees who, again, we set a very high standard and put a goal out there, and they rose to the challenge. And I told many people, you know, folks were saying the sky was going to fall and things were going to be chaotic and crazy, and I kept saying, "No, it won't. It'll be a smooth start," because we know what FCPS employees do. We gave them a challenge last year with full-day Mondays. We had a great start. We posed this great challenge and did it for all the right reasons, and a great start. Of course, that doesn't happen without lots and lots of planning, coordination, and work behind the scenes. So, there were So, there are a lot of folks I want to thank, but I do want to acknowledge the vision that was set by the school board a number of years ago, but certainly with the board resolution saying, "We've got to do this," and kind of putting a stake in the ground, saying, "This has to happen. This needs to happen." And so anyway, you should be proud. It's a proud moment, and I think you certainly demonstrated, not only to our community and even those who doubted this, but also to our nation because this is an important issue. Many other school systems across the country, even one in our backyard that's trying to do something as well, can show them that with the right kind of work and preparation and coordination that it can be a very smooth and positive start. I've been visiting schools, and I will tell you, I'm even hearing it from students, and I think you kind of alluded to that. I think it will make a positive difference, as was pointed out in some of the comments earlier, in just how well our students do and how positive and productive they are throughout the school year. So, kudos to so many people. You know, we had a huge task force of folks that worked with us the year before last. We worked through, I think, 20-something options, finally narrowed it down, made the decision early to allow our families and communities almost a year to get ready for it. That was, I think, smart and wise on our part. And then the coordination of so many county agencies who really worked with us and helped us. So many people were involved, all of the leadership team. Matt Guilfoyle through our Communications Department was a great add to our team, particularly when we needed a very strong communication plan, he really added a lot. But I think special kudos certainly go to Jeff Plattenberg and his team. You know, it was heavy lifting for our Transportation Department, and many of you heard me talk about the complexities of our Transportation Department on TV, on the news. It's a mammoth, you know, project to change something of that magnitude and to do it so well. Certainly was still tweaking, as we do at the beginning of every school year, making sure that we're accommodating families and children and getting them to school on time, ready for school, and they're doing that so well. Jeff also reached out to the County Police Department, and my goodness, they stepped up too. And so we're very appreciative of their work. They put out the flashing signs, helping us to communicate to the public. They, for the first time ever, I believe, they were, all the supervisors were assigned to schools and out greeting kids and helping them open car doors, and I thought that was certainly a goodwill gesture. And they also have been public in the paper about there's been no appreciable effect. So, not only has the Chief of Police, but also the spokesperson for the Virginia Department of Transportation has also commented that it's had no appreciable effect. So, thank you all. Congratulations to the team. And if I start listing all the folks, I'll forget someone, but just want to know that we're very, very grateful for all the hard work. And then finally, just with the start of school, so many people we count on, FCPS, so many dedicated, great people who worked so hard during the summer to get our schools ready to receive students. And I know we have almost 100, how many school visits did we have in this first few days? 198 by leadership team. 198 visits, and we've been debriefing about that, but comments about, you know, grounds being taken care of, you know, the schools being so clean and pristine, you know, some design and construction staff that had to really pull some late hours and, you know, to finish up some projects. But everyone did their part and had a lot to do with why we had such a great start to this school year. So, I want to thank all of our wonderful FCPS employees. It's days and weeks like this that make me extraordinarily proud to be a part of FCPS and this outstanding school system. There are a lot of exciting things ahead. Certainly, we have daunting challenges, and we will tackle those. And I do appreciate the individuals who came to our first community meeting last night that was very well-attended. I think we'll have many, many more opportunities throughout the fall for our community to weigh in. Saturday is yet one other event at 10 o'clock at Mount Vernon High School, 10:00 a.m., and we look forward to continuing the conversation with our community. Ultimately, it's the decision of the people sitting around this table that make the decision around our budget, but we are all very interested in what the community has to say. And that's what this entire exercise is about, allowing the community to have a voice, what they want us to take into consideration as we make these important decisions. So, we encourage our community to get involved, and you can go online and even develop your own budget that you would like for us to consider. So, I'm excited about that. Lots of great things ahead. We do have a very positive school year ahead of us. I will tell you that I've heard from countless teachers and principals that everyone feels very energetic and enthused and excited about this new school year. So, we're looking forward to it, and I'm looking forward to many school visits this year and seeing our wonderful employees and our great, great students in action. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Dr. Garza. Item 6.01, Board Committee Reports. I call on Ms. Darnak-Hofax.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz. A Comprehensive Planning and Development Committee was held on September 2nd. We met in closed session to discuss and fill four vacancies on the Facilities Planning Advisory Report, otherwise known as FPAC, and vacancies in the districts of Mount Vernon, Providence, Springfield, as well as an at-large seat were filled.
Thank you. Mr. Moon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Governance Committee met to discuss a couple of topics yesterday. The first one was the timeline, timeline of the reports on strategic plan goal areas, and we also had a chance to review the board's annual work calendar. The second topic had to do with a timeline for staff's responses to the Advisory Committee reports and potential review by the full board on some of the staff's responses. And they will be brought to the full board's discussion at the work session on September 21st.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Okay, item 701, Board Matters, where board members may make brief comments. I call on Mr. Velkoff. Okay, Ms. McLaughlin?
First, I want to echo everything that Dr. Garza conveyed about the later start times for our high school students. As many in the community know, I happen to still have a child in the public school system, 10th grader, and I can attest as a parent, having watched my older sons, what they went through in their middle school and high school years, and now watching my youngest start his first week of school, it is a dramatic change. And Mr. Plattenberg, I absolutely want to give you an extra set of applause. As one parent out of 190,000 students and their families, you and your willingness to partner with Dr. Garza and this board to say that it could be done, it has been over a decade of trying to convince this county that we can do it. And as the 10th largest in the United States, I am so hopeful that we will absolutely lead this change. When I posted it on social media, I heard from my friends who live across all parts of the country, and there are many schools that are still struggling to figure out how to make this work. And when I see every day this week, driving my son to school and the students walking in from the parking lot to the building, they're animated, they're alive, they're awake, they're excited to learn. As Mr. Greenberg said earlier, that is our mission, to help these children be ready to learn and be successful. And I couldn't be more proud of this board, and most especially our leader, Dr. Garza. You came in and you helped us find a way, and you will forever change the lives of every child that comes through and benefits from that later start time. And my husband and I thank you too, because I get an extra hour of sleep now every day since my 15-year-old can't drive, so I'm as happy as the kids. And then I also just want to share on behalf of Braddock District that I greatly appreciate how warm and welcoming our teachers and our faculty in our schools have been to our students, K through 12. Really, it's been a quiet week, other than the normal sort of bumps that we have in trying to run our buses after a two-and-a-half-month hiatus. But again, very responsive staff, Dr. Garza, everybody on your team is very much trying to help our families, and it's with great confidence as a board member that I appreciate knowing what good hands our families are in by the responsiveness that your staff is showing to them each and every day. And then finally, to my colleagues, after our summer hiatus, it's great to see your faces, great to know we now have a lot of work ahead of us in the new school year. And I'm looking forward to tomorrow's meeting with our board supervisors. It's just the start of conversation for the fiscal year '17 budget, but I will forever continue to be the Pollyanna that believe with our 12 resilient voices and Dr. Garza's leadership, we will be able to work with our community and with our board supervisors in understanding the need of this school system and how important it is to fully fund it so that our employees are able to deliver the best educational services for our students.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Welcome back, everyone. I wanted to also acknowledge the later high school start times and do a shout-out to Phyllis and the Sleep Organization, and of course, Sandy was part of that for a long time as well, and to all the advocates who worked tirelessly for years and years and were tenacious and wouldn't give up because they knew it was the right thing to do. And also want to acknowledge all the partnerships that my colleagues have already mentioned, in particular, Mr. Plattenberg, who just wouldn't take no for an answer, just figured out a way to get it done, and for that, we are eternally grateful, as are all the families and students who are getting to take advantage of this. So, thank you, everyone, and I think we can all be very, very proud of that. It wasn't easy, but we got it done. And I only, I got one email about someone who had to wait through a couple stoplights, and that is absolutely amazing. I usually get tons of email in the first week of school with transportation-related issues, so if anything, this went actually even more smoothly. So, it may have been because of the advanced planning and communication that was done, and people were not caught by surprise, but it was a job well-done by everybody, and we're all now being able to reap the benefits. I also want to mention that I continue to have a few openings for those citizens out there that might like to participate. The Minority Student Achievement Committee, I have an opening, the Challenged Material Review Committee, and the Language Material Review Committee. So, let me know if you or someone you know might be interested in serving. Last but not least, Budget. Mr. Velkoff as Chair and myself as Vice Chair, we have met with Dr. Garza and staff already several times to talk about budget, to roll up our sleeves and to begin to talk strategies, as well as with some board members, because, you know, once you've put one budget to bed, you really start up on the next one. So, I want people to know, if they're wondering, "What on earth are those board members doing?" Well, I can tell you, we've been working very hard already to begin to look at the situation. You know that the Budget Task Force is meeting. I encourage you all this year to participate if you never have before, because the implications are significant, and even if you don't have children in the schools, I believe you would see an impact. So, this is your chance to weigh in and help us make some very difficult decisions, including now coming on Saturday, I hope you'll be able to come to the committee meeting, but even if you can't come to the meeting, go online and you can record your opinions. So, we very much want to hear from you, and I echo Ms. McLaughlin's views. I actually missed my colleagues and look forward to working with you. We have a lot of work to do, but now that we have the strategic plan, we are going to be focused.
Thank you. Mr. Moon?
Pass, Madam Chair.
Okay, Ms. Evans?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. We did make history this year, this week in Fairfax County. This is the first school year in many decades where high school students went to school at or after 8:00 a.m. This will have many major health benefits for our teen students, and I'm already hearing reports, such as from Mr. Press, thank you, about how students are more alert, they're better rested, and I think they will, I know they will be healthier and happier for it. We still have some improvements we'd like to make, but for now, I think we basically just want to celebrate, because as other people have said, this went remarkably smoothly. Achieving this change, which some swore could not be done, took many, many people and a lot of time and effort. A lot of people deserve thanks and congratulations. Starting with Dr. Garza, your leadership was absolutely critical to this effort, so thank you for all that you did. To my colleagues, the fact that you were behind this all the way and you were determined that this change would happen and that we would find the solution, that was absolutely critical to this as well, so thank you for all of your work. I want to thank also Children's National Medical Center. They were our partners in this, and we mustn't forget how their expertise was so very helpful to us in this. Our Stakeholders Group, the many, many citizens who came out and worked with us to try to make this the best plan that it could be. Our Athletics folks, Bill Curran and Melody Modell, worked tirelessly to make sure that our athletic schedules were, worked, and that was quite an awesome effort and a very successful one. Our Principals have stepped up. They have communicated this over and over again. They have implemented it smoothly. You know, as others have said, people have gone to school and they knew what time their students were to be at the bus, they knew what time they were going to get there. It was communicated with the excellent efforts of our communications team, Matt Guilfoyle and his team, communicated last year, communicated throughout the summer, communicated leading up to the school year. So, that was excellent. I also want to thank our amazing advocates at Sleep, including Phyllis Payne, of course, who was here with us tonight thanking us, and I want to thank you again for all that you and the advocates did. You helped educate people, you were relentless with your research and your creative thinking and your collaboration with us. And this week represents the culmination of more than a decade of work, and from you, your group, many parents, students, and teachers, and they deserve our thanks for that as well. But for this week, I also want to say my most special kudos to our transportation team, our amazing transportation team. Without his dedication, persistence, and problem-solving, this just couldn't have happened. Other people have thanked you, Jeff. Jeff Plattenberg has been amazing throughout, but there were others on this team, so many others. Francine Furby, Sherri Witzman, Tom Italiano, Jamie Gelner, as well as many route supervisors, bus drivers, our entire team. It took that effort, and these are the people who get our kids to school every day, and they work so hard to get our kids to school every day safely. So, kudos to you. You are all heroes. Job well done.
Mr. Stork?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. I know Ms. Evans did a great job of summarizing all the different players, but I'm still going to pile on. I'm sorry. I think this is, after a decade's worth of effort and commitment by so many, and I know you and I have spent a great deal of time, and Ms. Payne, we have spent many, many meetings and times and hours strategizing and trying to identify ways and that we could somehow make this possible. But I think that besides yourselves and really the advocacy group that Sleep has been and really the education group that Sleep has been, I think the single most other important thing is that we had a community that recognized ultimately that this was important, and where that really came to light, I guess, and where it really became true is in the last election. The voters spoke. They elected school board members who felt that this was an important thing to do, and as a result, we were able to bring this home. I mean, we spent, I know you and I spent many years, but I've spent more than 10 years on the board trying to get a majority of folks who would agree and believe that this was important to do and would find a way to do it. And I know it was never simple. I know it was never one of those that you just could make happen with a magic wand, but still, it comes with commitment, dedication, and ultimately a board that was not going to accept no for an answer and ultimately would drive the staff decision-making necessary to make that happen. So, I'm going to start with the people, because they brought this group up here and this commitment to do, starting in high schools later, and with obviously folks at the grassroots that organized and made this all possible. So, thank you all very much. I know there are many other people that were thankful, that I'm thankful for, and Dr. Garza and Mr. Plattenberg, clearly you all have had key roles in this, but I know we start with, where it truly starts, with the public deciding this is important. And I think we're going to have another conversation about that this fall with respect to our budget. The public gets to decide what's really important. Do they truly want to make sure that our schools are funded? Do they truly want to make sure that our schools are funded at a level, not at 2008 levels, which is where we are right now, but at 2016 or '17 or '18 levels so that we can truly provide the quality school system that we all deeply believe this community is committed to? We will find out on November 3rd, frankly, but we all have to work pretty hard between now and then to make that a reality. But as one board member, I'm deeply committed to educating and driving that conversation, because I know the outcome frankly is critical to our students and critical to frankly the long-term success of our students and the long-term success of this community and our ability to develop a strong and vibrant and sought-after community where people want to come and buy a house and maybe pay a little bit extra in order to live here because our schools are that good. So, we have more fights to fight, but four years ago, we won one of them at that election. We have another one, this one, this election. I know that we all are committed to trying to make that a reality. I had two other things to mention. One is I wanted to thank Dr. Garza and had the opportunity to be with her at Hayfield Secondary School and Whitman Middle School. And Hayfield was wonderful and the energy level was truly amazing. And anybody who's not been in a school on the first day of school and doesn't feel the electricity of that time is missing out. It truly is. And that's not to say there aren't a few glum faces, a few kids who maybe that's not really what they want, or maybe they're still not into the new routine, but it, but it's still, in general, they're very happy to be there, and teachers and classmates, et cetera. And then we have obviously some new staff at Whitman and other schools to try to make that and bring those schools to kind of seeing the opportunities that they truly can realize. I have two more, if you will, sad notes, at least on my part. We had a high school principal this, about a week ago, who took a position, which was a joyous opportunity for her. Nardus King, principal at Mount Vernon High School, took a position to be assistant superintendent in Baltimore County Schools. I think she will be fabulous. She has given her life to Mount Vernon. She started as a finance technician more than 20 years ago, and she frankly worked her way up as a teacher and ultimately assistant principal and principal, and more importantly has given not only her time and life to the community, but frankly, her own children were part of the community and were key elements of the success that we've had there. So, Nardus, you have done a fabulous job. We are going to miss you, but I also know you leave an incredible legacy and look forward to your success in Baltimore and bringing a lot of what I think you've gotten and gleaned and brought to Mount Vernon, taking that with you to Baltimore County and helping make a difference to so many schools there. And last, but maybe absolutely not least, is I had my executive administrative assistant, Mary Ellen Hook, who retired after decades of service. And Mary Ellen has had so many different important positions in this school system. She did a fabulous job in working with me. I know many others who I see head nods, because I know she worked with many others. And for those of you who don't know, in the community, we, the school board doesn't have a lot of staff. In fact, the individual school members get to have about a third of the time of an administrative person, which means they can be incredibly multi-handed in trying to deal with all the different elements that we have to do. And she did that extraordinarily well. Retirement was, I know, greatly appreciated on her part, and I know she's looking forward to being the kind of grandma that I know she will be fabulous at. So, Mary Ellen, my hats off to you and my great thanks to you for all the hard work you gave, not only me, but so many other members of the board and our FCPS community. Thank you again.
Thank you. Ms. Strauss?
Thank you, and I will not repeat all the wonderful things that everybody said about the later high school start times, but again, I want to thank Mr. Plattenberg, Dr. Garza, my colleagues, Phyllis Payne, Sandy, everybody. We finally figured out how to do it, and it went extremely well. It was very smooth. A funny story, back in 1990, when I was president of the county council of PTAs, I used sticky notes in my, the floor in my house, and I thought I had figured out how to resolve this. And actually, I had high school starting at 8:15 and middle school starting at 7:30, but I couldn't make the rest of it work. So, thank you to everybody who's worked so hard, and my colleagues who have been patient enough until we finally got this thing going. I also want to thank you all for supporting the money in the budget that provided more teachers so that we could begin to reduce class size in some of our overcrowded elementary classes. I have seen positive results in a lot of my elementary schools, particularly in the McLean-Langley Pyramid. The class sizes are far more reasonable, the parents are very grateful, the teachers are very grateful. So, thank you, Dr. Garza, for putting in. Thank you, my colleagues, for supporting it. It has made a difference, and now we've got to keep going forward, not going back. We don't want to take that out again. So, that is very exciting. I also want to thank Jeff Plattenberg and his crew. I have a number of schools that are huge construction projects. And Hickock looks great, we opened, and Langley High School looks like it's been blown up, which is exactly what it's supposed to look like. But we opened and everybody is fine, and school is going on without a problem. I also had at this time a couple of elementary schools out in Herndon who combined back-to-school night and an open house, and they cycled buses in and out from the various neighborhoods, because we have a lot of parents who must rely on public transportation or school buses to get to school. And it was very successful. Clearview was one that really did it, and I have some others that have been looking at it. So, was very pleased. It's good to see people with new and unusual ideas and to really reach out to their community so that they know how important their partnership is with that school. So, especially Clearview, thank you very much. And I would also like to congratulate the McLean Highlander News Magazine. They're one of 16 magazines nationwide who are finalists in a pacemaker competition. They are the only recognized high school news magazine in Virginia. And the editors are Andrea Delgado, Hannah Menchel, Grace Murray, and their teacher advisor is Lindsay Benedict. These, the finalists are considered the finest high school journalists in the country. So, yay, McLean. I'm very proud of you all, and good luck as we move forward with the rest of the year, but we're off to a great start. Thank you.
Mr. McAlvey?
Couple of things that people haven't spoken on yet. And I know we're all very excited to welcome Eileen to joining us later this month. Just, as you know, this is not how every meeting is going to go, so enjoy it while you can.
Yeah, manage expectations.
And also, it was wonderful to recognize our new Food and Nutrition Services Director. For those of you who don't know about the work he's done in Riverside, California, it's truly transformational, and I think he can take all the groundwork that we've done with the system-wide survey and the pilot work and really run with it. So, I'm very excited for that.
Ms. Darnack-Kowacs?
Thank you. I also do want to recognize all of those who, including all of us, who helped to make the later start time initiative work, but specifically to Sandy and Phyllis for your decades-long and tenacious work in helping people educate, getting us all educated on what this means and how good it can be for our teens. So, thank you so much. Thank you, of course, to Dr. Garza, Mr. Plattenberg, and your team for finding the will and taking the, your expertise and knowledge and making it happen in a rather cost-effective way and giving great benefit. I can tell you, as Ms. McLaughlin and I are one of the two sitting here tonight with children, my daughter is loving it. I'm getting love from her friends and just like, "Mrs. Kovacs, this is great." So, thank you for, you know, and I can personally see the difference. Just in three days, you know, it's working and much more engaged and it's exciting. I have been to many back-to-school nights and pre-back-to-school nights, which have been wonderful. I like some of the pre-back-to-school nights because they give longer times for parents to engage in a kind of a less formal atmosphere, so I've been to several of those. I've been to ones at Edison, Rose Hill, Crestwood. They have been amazing. I joined Dr. Garza at Lynbrook and Whitman, Lynbrook Elementary and Whitman Middle Schools on the first day of school. Tonight, I had a little talk with the PTA at Groveton, and so it's been wonderful, lots of excitement, as it always is at the beginning of the year. One thing, another positive thing in addition to these later start times, what I'm seeing a lot of up in the hallways in elementary schools, as well as everything else, our strategic plan and the goals broken down in a way. What does it mean to be a communicator in elementary schools? What does it mean to collaborate? So, things like that, where you're seeing these displayed prominently, embedding these objectives into the curriculum. And I've talked to several teachers and administrators who are really happy that this is a countywide initiative, and they feel a synergy in having this information and sharing it. So, I'm excited about that, and as you go into the schools, please look for those things. Tomorrow, I'll be at a ribbon cutting at a new turf field at Hayfield Secondary, so we're excited about that. I ask that community members do come out to the second budget meeting at Mount Vernon High School. And I also do want to, as Mr. Stork said, bid a fond farewell to Nardus King. Nardus, I spoke to you today, and I told you all the things that I needed to, but I formally want to say thank you for all you've done for Mount Vernon High School and that community. Your impact was great. You will be missed, but we wish you the best of luck in Baltimore County. Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, my remarks. It has really been a smooth start, and I think you know that when the first day feels like the calm after the storm, and that's actually how it felt going around to schools on the first day. I had very few last-minute issues, you know, that came to me via email from parents, and they were all dealt with quickly, you know, they were resolved very quickly and with respect and kindness and concern for the students and their families. So, I was, I'm very grateful for that. Was able to visit on the first day of school Flint Hill Elementary School in Vienna, celebrating its 60th opening of school. Very exciting. Had some of the original students there from the very first year of the school there, and they had their old report cards with them, actually, from first grade. It was amazing. And Marty Smith, Mr. Smith, was a second-grade teacher there, and there's a picture of him right in the lobby there from those days. We were marking how little he's changed since then. And I also was able to visit Wolf Trap Elementary School on the first day, and I want to echo what Mrs. Strauss said. That's one school that has really struggled with large classes, and the principal there, Teresa Kaluki, was so glad to be able to tell me that actually this is going to be a good year for them on class size, and what a relief for that community. I really, I appreciate everybody, everybody's work, Dr. Garza, with the, you know, the new policy on staffing and all the work that happened over the summer to actually make that happen. They don't have to make any last-minute changes, they just, they have what they need, which is wonderful. Vienna Elementary School looks beautiful, as always. It was nice to stop by there. Thoreau Middle School is about halfway through there, incredible construction project, and the part that's finished is just gorgeous. I mean, it's just amazing to me. So, student-friendly and bright and sunny, it's going to be, it's just going to be beautiful when it's done. Was able to go to Pine Spring Elementary and Mantua Elementary with Dr. Garza. That was very exciting, a little bit outside of my usual area, but very wonderful to walk around those two schools. Also, just wanted to thank Fairfax County Police Department, I think it was mentioned, but they were a huge help on the first day of school, and they don't have to do that. They just decided to be out there, and apparently they were opening doors for some kids, they were doing the valet thing for some of the kids, which was, just to have them out present and helping us out was wonderful. Thank you to South Lakes High School in Reston for hosting last night's 2017 Budget Task Force Public Meeting. We had a great turnout. I want to thank budget staff and IT staff. There was, I know a lot of work went into that, and it seemed to go off without a hitch. People, yeah, seemed very happy. Thanks so much to the task force members, the amount of work that's gone into that and the commitment that they've shown to this work, I think is terrific, and I think we all just want to be very nice to them because they're doing hard work and work that's not, probably may not make them popular with everybody. Also, thanks to everybody in the community who showed up. I mean, that cafeteria was full, and I think that's such a good sign, because what happens to the system, the school system this year, in this very challenging year, is really up to the community. The community owns these schools, and so we need people to be out there, becoming educated and getting involved. And as somebody said, you know, "If you have neighbors who don't have children in the school system, please make sure that they're paying attention to..." When I talk to people who don't have kids in the school system anymore, it's wonderful. Their thoughts about the school system are, "What a great school system, how great, congratulations." I really, you know, my own kids came through, and they're also the people who built the school system, who made it as great as it is today, and they've handed us this legacy. And I think it's important that they know that we need to continue to invest in it, to keep it as great as it should be. And so, I'll just say probably goodnight to everybody at Madison High School. Ben Press and I left back-to-school night there to come over here tonight. It looked like it was going very well. So, with that, this meeting is adjourned. Wait, oh, hang on, we have to close meeting. Thank you. I have one more thing to do before we adjourn. The board, item 8.01, the board will now make a motion to go into closed meeting to discuss and consider the employment and performance of specific public employees pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2, 3711A1, and to consult with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2 dash 3711A7. Do I have a motion? Mr. Moon, a second. Ms. Reed, all those in favor? All those in favor? It is unanimous. So, we will now go into closed meeting. Thank you.